Thank you. All right, we're gonna move into the work session. We have no correspondence to speak of. So, number one on the agenda is the Granite Knolls Park Solar Project. This is a pre-preliminary application. Location's 2975 Stony Street. How are you?
Good evening Chairman Fawn, members of the board. Adam Rodriguez, Town Attorney. Supervisor couldn't be here tonight. He asked me to show up and just kind of introduce the project to you all, although I'm sure you're very familiar with it. Just give a quick recap for the board. The Town Board issued a request for proposals for the development of a solar facility at the Granite Knolls Sports Complex. After a fairly lengthy procurement process, interviews, and much deliberation, the Town Board selected HESP Solar to construct the solar facility you see in front of you and entered into a 25-year lease agreement for the property at Granite Knolls. The high-level points of the lease, it's a 25-year lease, the anticipated revenues are approximately $145,000 a year to the town. And you can see there's a carport over the parking lot. There's also a ground mount area in the top-right quadrant. And we'll...
Now, Robin, are you pulling that up?
Mm-hmm.
Because the public can't see the map. Just wait a second.
Is it true that some of the revenues that are coming in are gonna go to John Tiger Teller's raise?
That's attorney-client privilege.
Good answer.
That's not enough. John, say nothing further. So, there's the... Oh, that's one of the... That's... It looks like actually a different plan, actually, Robin.
It's loading slowly.
Oh, okay.
For some reason.
Yeah. So, that's... Those are the two main components of the project. In the top-right quadrant, those are the ground-mount solar panels. And then over the parking lot is the canopy system. There's also supposed to be a small battery storage facility. I don't... If you zoom in, you may be able to see it, but it's near the basketball court there, to the right of where that shed is. Yeah, it's anticipated to be in that area of the shed. So, again, the anticipated revenue stream, if the system is designed as proposed, is 140... Approximately $145,000 a year. And the Town Board passed a resolution, I think it was last week, to dedicate... Or to create a capital improvement trust for the Parks Department, basically, to ensure that the revenue is dedicated to capital improvements for the parks system. The lease... One of the other main components of the lease agreement is that HESP agreed to provide the town with an upsum... An upfront lump-sum payment of $500,000 to go toward repaving the parking lot. It's one of the things that the Parks Department really wanted. So, that's in there. And, you know, all estimates are that that would be enough revenue to pay for it. So, it'd be, you know, revenue-neutral to the town. If there are any questions, you know, I can certainly try to answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to HESP to kind of go through the project in more detail.
Is the $500,000 in addition to the anticipated revenue per year?
No, it would be an upfront lump-sum payment, but be offset against the 140...
You've got about five years upfront payment, or four years.
Well, it's offset on a pro-rata basis throughout the term of the lease. So, it doesn't... You don't take the hit up. It's not like you won't get revenue for five years. So, it helps with budgeting.
Thank you. How are you?
Hi, good. How are you doing?
Good.
Eric Redding with Bergman. We're the engineers on the project. And Adam gave a good overview of the project. And I have a few more details to share what we have so far as we move along in the design process. So, the system will produce a total of 1.3 megawatts AC of power. The carport system is approximately 1.7 acres in size. The ground-mounted system's about 1.5 acres in size. The ground-mounted system is located in mostly a grassed or brush area, so no trees will be cleared for the array itself. But there are some trees, as you see, to the southeast, kind of surrounding the array. So, some of those trees will be trimmed back a little bit to eliminate any shading on the panels, so they are efficient. The panels will be enclosed by a 20... A seven-foot-high chain-link fence with a 20-foot-wide double-swing gate for access. And we're also not proposing disturbance over an acre. So, then that means we don't have to get any stormwater permitting through the DEC or the New York City DEP as well. Any areas that we do disturb, though, will be reseeded with a wildflower pollinator-type of seed mix. And if the board has any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
From the board?
No.
Nope.
You know, again, we've seen so many solar projects come in, and some of them just seem easy. You know, this is an area which has clearly been developed some years ago by the town with the beautiful park we have up there. And it's really nice to hear that the money's gonna go back into the Town Rec Department. I'm sure they could use the revenue, just first flush. Seems pretty straightforward.
Sure.
Pretty good. We appreciate you showing up tonight.
Great.
Looking forward to seeing the progress as we go through. John, were we missing anything on your end? Jim?
Not a present. I think...
Yeah.
I think you could do the PIH.
Okay. Can we set that up?
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Very much. Okay, next we have Crystal Court Subdivision. This is a discussion. How are you?
Good, everyone. Good to see everybody in person.
Good evening.
John Borelli, Panbar Realty for Crystal Court. I believe that we've satisfied everything that was asked of us. We had some drawings redone. We were in front of the Tree Committee or the Conservation Committee. We redrew the plans for the tree replacement, brush removal. And we're looking to see what we need to do next.
So, John, what are our next steps here?
Did you receive the Tree Committee's latest memo from July?
No.
Okay, we'll get that to you. They do have some further...
Oh, it's on the back.
Further recommendations. But I think... Robin, do we have a public hearing on this yet?
Yes.
Yes. So, I think for... If you feel that you're ready for September, you can consider a decision. We can draft a resolution for you and make sure that some of the remaining recommendations of the Tree Committee and Conservation Board are satisfied.
Is it just a minor obstacle? Is it just a few minor changes? Because I thought we pretty well had it covered the last time I spoke with them.
Looks like it's dated July 11th.
Okay, no, I never saw that. Thank you.
You need to, you know... Well, you can read them. I don't think any of them seem to be major recommendations or comments.
Yeah, this is very minor. Okay.
You can hold on to that.
Thank you.
The only concern I have at this point is finishing up the conservation easement piece. And I don't know if you've had any further discussions with any agency in terms of, you know, memorializing that donation, so to speak.
Well, we tried to donate it to the town, but it seemed that the town engineer at the time decided he didn't want it. And that's pretty much where we left off with that. So, what is it you need from us?
Well, in order for an easement to take place, there should be some sort of an agency, an entity that holds it and acts on it, you know, to protect the easement that's given. And there are various agencies, not the town government, but there are land trusts out there that...
I reached them. Nobody wants it. I reached out to the Westchester Land Trust, Putnam County, a couple down county in Westchester. Can't seem to...
How do we handle the easement piece of this application, then?
Well, many are held in favor of the town.
By the town?
So, you can. And then with the town typically has the right, but not the obligation, to do the maintenance that they feel needs to be done within the conservation easement, if the landholders are not. But the discussion earlier in this subdivision was that the town did not want to take additional land, whereas we have to make...
Outright.
Outright. And there were not any, as I recall, other entities such as Westchester Land Trust that were interested in being a named holder of the easement. So, the preference in this case was actually the town having the easement.
Will the town accept that?
Yeah. There's two ways you can do it. Often in the past, there was easement language on the plat, and the plat alone. Of late, we've been having that as well. In addition, we also have had written easements that the Town Board actually accepts and that also get filed along with the plat.
I would recommend that second course of action in this case.
Okay.
And then I would tie up that issue.
All right, so you want to meet with John?
Sure.
Work out the details?
Absolutely.
All right?
Good.
And then we'll see you in September.
Great, see you then. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, next we have 3666 Old Yorktown Road. This is a discussion of offense. This has been on three meetings. Okay. Put that one off. All right, next we have the Bird Bus Sales and Service.
This is brand-new, right?
Yeah. Pre-preliminary discussion. Location's 3805 Crampon Road. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
My name is Darius Shafazadeh. I'm an attorney with the law firm Harris Beach in White Plains. With me are, well, Bird Bus, Rob Reichenback here, and his father, Rick, owners of Bird Bus. And they're gonna explain a little bit about the company. And then we're gonna have JMC run through the project, what we're proposing for the former Kia dealership that we're looking to redevelop. So, we'll start off with Rob with a little introduction about Bird Bus, and we can answer any questions, yeah?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Evening. My name's Robert Reichenback, Bird Bus Sales. We're the largest distributor of school buses on Long Island, New York City, and Westchester. We currently have an operation on Long Island and operate in Plain... In Elmsford, New York. We came across this property and are looking to make a move up to the town of Yorktown. We don't... When people think of school buses, they may think of a lot of operations in and out, a lot of traffic. That's not who we are. We are a distributor of school buses, similar to a car dealership, Ford or Chevy, that you would go to purchase a car. But in selling cars, we sell school buses. Our customers consist of all of the school districts in Westchester, as well as the third-party operators and private contractors. What we don't do is heavy-duty maintenance. We don't do a lot of heavy-duty engine work. What our primary use of the vehicle in the property is prepping the vehicle for delivery, which occurs off-site, so we don't have a lot of foot traffic inside of our property. And when we do perform maintenance, it's a state inspection performed by New York State, which comes in to inspect the vehicle. These vehicles are inspected twice a year and must be inspected before a new bus goes out. Therefore, if there is any work, it's light electrical work and maintenance.
Good question. So, car dealership, you have a trailer that comes in with all the cars.
Correct.
What happens in a situation like this? Are you talking full-size buses?
We sell small-size school buses and your large-size school bus. These vehicles are driven in, dropped off, and then the driver finds a way home, whether it's a railroad or public transportation. And like I said, they're not trailered, so we deliver the vehicle off-site to the end user. Ninety-nine percent of our sales occur off-site, so there aren't customers coming to the facility to look at a school bus. Most people don't wake up on Sunday morning and say, "Hey, I wanna go see the bells and whistles of a new school bus." But it's to us, that's what we do. We think they're beautiful vehicles. They're the safest vehicles on the road. You're 80 times safer in a school bus getting to and from school than you are in a normal passenger car. And it's our job to make sure those vehicles meet those standards and stay up to spec.
So, if Bill got up one morning and says, "You know, I think I wanna go buy a school bus," could he walk in there and...
In reality, yes, you can. You can come and do a demo. But like I said, 99% of the time, we would take the vehicle to your operation to show you and demo the bus off-site at your facility, so you know how it's gonna operate in your terrain.
How many buses will you have on-site at a time, do you think?
I can leave that up to JMC to get into the specifics of the site.
Question, you don't manufacture the buses?
We do not manufacture. So, like I said, we operate similar to a car dealership, where we'll be procuring the vehicles, getting prepped, and then deliver the vehicles.
Who's the source to manufacture?
We sell Bluebird school buses. We are... You'll see them right around this area. We actually lead in alternative fuels. So, we sell not just diesel buses, but about 60 to 70% of our vehicles operate on gasoline, propane, and now electric. I delivered the first four electric... 100% zero-emission electric school buses on Long Island and are moving the next 11 in New York State in November as well. So, that's the way the future is going, is electric school buses. Zero emission, clean, so that's... So, when we talk about a site like this, what we wanna do, upgrade it so that we can produce the... Deliver the vehicles for the future.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Seems like a good fit, too.
It's... And like I said, we operate very similar to a car dealership, but instead of a car, it's a $100,000 school bus, so...
Gonna have to make the doors bigger.
That's what we'll talk with JMC about. All right, thank you very much.
Evening. For the record, Paul Dumont, JMC. Just wanna take a step back and talk a little bit about the property. Property is located at 3805 Crampon Road. It's the former Kia dealership. It is 2.74 acres in size, and as shown on the aerial map, it's comprised of two parcels. The property lies within the town's C4 Commercial Zoning District. School Bus Sales is classified as an automobile sales use, which is specially permitted within this zone. There are some special permit criteria, which I'll touch on shortly. Just to orient everybody, north is to the right on this plan. The site's bordered by Crampon Road to the north, Garden Lane, and the 202 diner to the west, single-family homes to the south, and the New York Bariachi Group building to the east. In order to support the reoccupation of the property, the applicant is proposing some renovations to the building as well as the site. I'll just flip the plan. So, here's a preliminary site plan we've prepared for the property. With regard to the building, the applicant will be cleaning up the facade. The front building, there will be interior renovations, and will house the offices and the dealership. The rear garage building, the roof will be raised to accommodate the proper height for school buses to enter the service doors, and that will be the service portion of the dealership. With regard to the site, the blue hatched area that's shown on the plan, on the bottom of the plan, is the school bus storage area that we're proposing. We're proposing a storage area that can accommodate 48 school buses on the property. The access and curb cuts on the site will be maintained. There's currently two curb cuts on Crampon Road. The one to the east is an enter-only, and the one at the top is an exit-only, so we'll maintain that one-way flow. We will also be maintaining the parking spaces in the front of the building that exist today. Those will be customer parking spaces. And we're also proposing some additional customer parking spaces in the bottom-right corner on the plan. This area here will be a proposed landscaped area, which will have some screening landscaping, as well as a fence, to screen the storage area. And lastly, in the rear of the property, we're proposing 10 employee parking spaces. Just wanna touch, as I mentioned, there are some special permit criteria for the automobile sales use. Just wanna touch on a few of those. There's a requirement for customer parking. 10 spaces are required. We're providing 18. There's a requirement to have the storage area screened. There's a maximum size for the storage area. We're proposing about a 19,000-square-foot storage area. I believe 40% of the lot area is permitted. We're proposing about 16%. And there's also a special permit criteria that dictates the maximum amount of vehicles that can be stored on the property. Based on the lot area, 59 vehicles are permitted, and we're storing... Proposing to store 48. So, with that said, we're here to get your initial feedback. Can you answer any questions you might have? And Robert and Rick can answer any operational questions.
The first one I have is probably operational. Hours of operation?
Seven AM to 4 PM.
You gotta... I'm sorry, you gotta...
We operate 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's when our employees are in.
All right, we have...
Monday to Friday.
There was another operation approved in the area, which does a lot of night work, especially with the backup alarms and lights. It became an issue. So, this is something your standard work hours?
Our standard work hours are 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
So, you wouldn't foresee buses being delivered through the middle of the night?
There wouldn't be traffic coming in and out of the property at night, middle of the night, or anything like that.
Okay, great. And I don't know if it was ever resolved, but the road, the side road...
Garden Lane?
Yeah. The ownership of it, is that still a private road?
Yes.
It is?
To my knowledge, yes.
The whole thing, from 202 in?
No, from about the second lot, the triangular part of the lot. North, south of that is town-owned. But the portion between the diner and this building is, I believe, still not owned by the town.
All right. So, you guys, they own, or I'm sure if you bought this, you own... They own to the middle of that road.
I believe so.
Okay.
I'll double-check that for next time.
Yeah, this might be a good time to get rid of that. Maybe the town take it over.
Hey, can you just point... I don't... I'm getting a little confused.
You know the road between the diner and the Kia? What is the Kia now?
Right here.
Yeah, you own half of that.
So, up to about here.
No, no, up to the middle of the road.
Up the lot, the...
Long...
That way, yeah.
Right in the middle, okay.
So, there was an issue, and I don't know if at some point it got paved some years back.
Well, in order for the town to take it, it would have to be up to town road standard, and that had been the difficulty for...
This might possibly be a good time to look at that again, because I'm sure you guys probably wouldn't want to own the road. And I'm not sure if the diner is interested in owning that, too, because that means the maintenance of it is yours and across the street. And I know, I'm sure there's other issues that surround it with that. So, just something to start... You know, I would take a look at... And another thing, and I heard, you know, you started to talk about the landscaping. I know we've been very sensitive to that with the other applications. I think it's gonna be just as sensitive here. Past that, I didn't have any...
Well, I think it's a good fit.
Yeah, I mean, the place really needs some help.
Well, it's... We do wanna give it a nice facelift, make it look presentable. It's a representation of our company as well.
Yeah.
We have a great reputation within our industry, and I think this would be a great opportunity to display a great fit for the town and for Bird Bus.
Where's your place in Elmsford?
We're in Warehouse Lane.
Oh, Warehouse Lane.
Amazon has just recently moved in there into that facility.
Would you be living there and just...
We would be... We rent that property currently, so we are looking to purchase this property, move in full-time, and make this a great operation for us and for the town.
The second piece of property you are going to leave unused?
As of right now, we don't have a plan for it. That's... JMC can talk about that part.
Robert said it all. As of now, there's no plans for that parcel.
Okay. John, anything on your end at this point?
I think the lighting will be something that we have to look at closely.
And that's been a very sensitive issue along that strip. Anything on your end, Jim, right now?
Paul, can you tell me how the school bus inspections are handled? Is there one time throughout the year when all the buses are inspected, or are they inspected throughout the year as licenses expire, or... How is that? In other words, would there be a flood of vehicles at certain times of the year, or would it be a fairly consistent number?
It would be fairly consistent throughout the year. The summertime, customers are looking for their vehicles for school start during that August, early September. So, there may be a little bit more activity at that time of the year. However, like I said, we do the first inspection on every new school bus before it is delivered. After that, the end user, whether it be a third-party contractor or a school district, the inspectors go to those facilities...
Oh, okay.
...to perform it. So, when we're talking about school buses, they do not come... They typically do not come back to our facility for a re-inspection. We have a couple of... We do have a couple of customers that we do the inspection for, but those are scheduled six months in advance. So, we have a consistent schedule for those vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
It's not random. It's not... And there's a maximum that can be done per day. So, there are... It's not like we're going to be doing 50 inspections. We don't have the activity as a car dealership, so if we do five or six repair orders, I guess you could say, inspections a day, or maintenance on a vehicle, that would be a typical day. So... And that does not mean that there are five or six vehicles coming into our facility a day. They may come in three or four at a time, but it's not three or four at a time every single day.
All right, well, as this starts to progress, obviously, I would definitely work closely with John's office. I know the town engineer is not here tonight with the Building Department and obviously the Engineering Department. I think the physical appearance of this is gonna be important.
Right.
I heard you're raising the roof to, you know, modify it to get the buses in. I know one of the things we really look at here is to make sure, and it's a flat road, so that any equipment, if it's on the roof, is kinda shielded from the road. And again, obviously, the physical appearance is gonna be very important. And I would just look into that road ownership.
Okay.
All right, that's something, you know, if you're buying it, that's something I would definitely be interested in figuring out.
Okay.
All right?
You wanna set him up for a PIH?
We do that, Robin? Okay.
If you wanna put solar panels on the roof, we know some people.
Well, we're selling electric buses now, so...
How long does an electric bus run for with that?
The range is up to 120 miles on a full charge. It takes... On a DC fast charge, the bus will go from 0% to 100% in just over three hours.
Incredible, things change so quick.
Yeah.
We have... Bluebird had... We're right at 750 electric school buses ordered or delivered already. We're number one in the United States.
Congratulations.
So, we're almost at that thousand mark, and we've been doing it for... Bluebird's been around since 1909 or so, so we're the only school bus manufacturer, whereas the other school bus companies are truck dealers as well. We do school bus only, and that's what we're interested in doing.
That's great.
Welcome to Yorktown.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you think the town would even want this road?
Yes.
Only if the road is constructed to town specifications.
I mean, it just seems like a liability. You'd have to plow it and you'd have to light it. It only saves two, serves two customers.
The way it is now, uh, I'm not really maintaining it properly, so.
What's up, man? I have a different agenda.
Okay, next we have the Northern Westchester Executive Park. Also known as G H P Strang LLC. This is a discussion site plan. Two six five one Strang Boulevard.
How are you?
Again, very good, you?
Good.
Joe Tramelli from Keller Sessions, representing G H P Strang. This is just a follow-up to the public informational hearing that was closed last week. I know the board had a couple of questions. There was a resident with some comments and concerns. If you remember, we were asked to do an inspection of some of the ongoing activities.
Very much.
That were out there. We did that, uh, the next day, I believe it was, Tuesday. Went out to the site, took a look at what was going on and found, as, as we had stated at the meeting, that everything that is going on is being done in accordance with any current permits with the town. There is some interior renovation work being done to the building. The road that was, quote unquote, road that was mentioned is a temporary construction access road that was built to gain access to the lower level, which is the, you know, what we're here for, for the, the access to that lower level of the parking lot. They needed temporary access for construction vehicles to get to that, that lower level for some of the demo work. A construction access road can, built, it's, you know, typical crushed stone, paved asphalt millings. It's all stable. Any down gradient areas were stabilized and protected with soap fence. There were no signs of erosion. So it was, it was built to, you know, industry standards and, and is stable and operating as intended. The soil stockpiling that was referenced is directly related to the removal of the existing twenty thousand gallon underground fuel oil storage tank. And that's immediately adjacent to the upper parking lot in the area of the proposed ADA access ramp that will gain access. So we're, I can't seem to log on for some reason to pull the plan up. Robin, you don't have them, do you? But if you, if you recall, there was a ramp proposed at the existing loading dock and entry area where there's just stair access right now. This ramp would be in the area and, and immediately over the tank. The tank isn't being used anymore anyway, so they took the opportunity to remove it. Again, it's all under current permits. The material's being stockpiled on plastic liners in the existing paved parking lot, which is what the neighbor had seen. It is being covered with plastic tarps at the end of the day, or certainly before any predicted storm events to provide protection from erosion. Trying to think of those two issues. There were some comments about the trees, this, the, I guess, current condition of the trees. Uh, as was noted, and I guess agreed to by the, the neighbor, many, if not all, the trees north of our project area and the northern property are largely deciduous. There are some evergreens that border the property. I believe they're just on our site, if not, you know, into our site, maybe ten, fifteen feet. They seem to be in fair condition. They're not the greatest looking trees, but they are, they've been around. They're probably fifty, sixty feet tall. There are some vines growing on some of the trees, but certainly nothing, I think, that would pose any kind of danger. And lastly was, I think there was a question as to the need for the parking lot. And, and as we stated a couple of times, you've been to the site. You know, it, it can be quite a walk from the south end of the property to the northern building, let alone the lower level. So just trying to provide some flexibility and some opportunity for new tenants. We did talk about maybe possibly a site walk. I don't know if that's done with the board as a joint walk, or you just kind of go at your convenience?
We definitely wanted to go out there. I don't, this one, we might be easier just to go individually.
I, I drove by there the other day.
Yeah.
It seemed fine to me.
I, I, yeah, and I, I, you know, I think some.
It looked like it was necessary.
We think so.
Yeah.
I, I think it'll certainly help the situation.
You know, especially, especially the, the, the use of the bottom.
Of course.
I don't see a need for a formal site visit here.
No, I think we were just going to individually go out if we wanted.
Yeah, I think that, that would be fine.
And, and knowing the site, you know, it's important to note again that anything we're doing is going to be below the level of the existing parking lot. You'll never see it from the street.
Yeah.
There are some retaining walls, but again, you know, you won't see anything. You might not even see the tops of the, the, any light poles for the parking lot, because it is set so far below the existing parking lot.
Right.
So from, you know, visual impact standpoint, the only, there are three affected, or three neighbors to the north, two of which are well over two hundred feet away through that wooded area. The neighbor, I believe who was here at the informational hearing is the closest of the three. And he's at the, he's closest to Strang Boulevard. Uh, and maybe, I think it's about a hundred and seventy feet, a hundred and fifty feet maybe, from the nearest point of our proposed driveway. But you'll see on the plan that the topography, I wish I could, oh, there you go. The grade of our driveway entrance or connection to the existing parking lot is probably two feet below. There's a little bit of a ridge, right? If you could see the, the adjoining property lines on the, the two lots to the north. There's a little bit of a ridge there, so the, the topography climbs up from where we're connecting and then falls back down, probably about four to five feet to the patio level of the adjacent home. So again, just, it, very, very limited visual impact. It would really just be any vehicles at the very top of that drive that would be leaving the site and not much different from any activity that might be happening in that lot currently. We could certainly work with staff or the board and, and, you know, maybe extend the evergreen screening or relocate them a little bit to provide some additional, you know, visual screening between the drive and the, and the residence.
I think that's going to be key, from what we heard from the residents the last time.
Yeah.
And I would work with John's office to work out some of those details.
Sure.
But I think that was their biggest concern.
I think so.
Was the visual.
I think if we simply took that, that row of evergreens and, and kind of followed that curve of the drive a little bit more.
Yeah.
And extended it further up, I think that'll satisfy.
Yeah, if you can work with John.
Sure.
You guys, you guys work with the landscape architect, right?
I know somebody.
Dave Sessions?
I think so.
So maybe he can look at that.
He's got some letters after his name.
Yes. But that might be a good area to possibly tweak. But I would ask if you could work closely with.
Sure.
With John's office.
Absolutely.
Did we miss anything?
Could you just describe the temporary access road, its location, how much grading was done? And the difference between what you're showing on the existing drawing and what additional grading has to be done to do the final road as you're showing now?
Sure, so.
Long-winded question.
That's okay. Robin, what's the code? I think I get, it finally woke up over here.
Were there any fences proposed here too?
Thank you.
You got to ask that. On top of the wall or around the wall?
What was that, I'm sorry?
Any fences proposed?
Uh, not yet. We're still working out those details. Probably not along, we'll have a, a guide rail, I'm sure, along the drive.
Okay.
Whether or not we need something on the, let's see. Whether or not we need something along the top of the, the lower retaining wall for the parking lot. We need to figure that out. I'm not sure that we will, because there's, let me just, the only real access from above will be on that ramp. Let me just try and do this, sorry. So you have this, this access ramp here. That will have railings and, and, you know, direct any pedestrians from the parking lot into the building or along this walkway down some stairs, which again would have railings keeping anybody from, you know, going to either side.
Right.
So whether or not we need a fence here on top of that wall, I'm not sure yet. I don't know that it's really needed. We will have, like I said, a guide rail along this side of the drive.
So if, if there is a rail on that side, especially through the proximity to the, to the residential area, is there any way that could be done, like a wood rather than a standard?
Steel? Yeah, I'm sure the owner would probably prefer that.
Okay.
From a, you know, aesthetic value.
And, and as you start to work through those details again.
Sure.
Include John in that.
And let me just go to the grading plan. I think that might help. So, obviously I don't have the access road shown on this plan, John, but as, as best I could tell from being out at the site, there, the access road, the temporary access road starts a little further up from where our connection is shown, kind of in, in this area here. And then follows generally this same alignment. And it turns right around this contour here. There's an existing tree that is still there and that road is down beneath it and comes down, you know, right into this area where the existing, or where the proposed, rather, loading dock and, and walkway is. So, uh.
So they.
As far as any.
They've accomplished a, a good amount of the fill that you're showing here? Is that fair to say?
No, not at all. They, they did very little regrading of that area to build the construction road. You know, it's for construction vehicles, so they don't need to obviously meet grades and, and code requirement for slope and whatnot. So there was very little done in the way of reshaping existing grades. They needed to fill obviously a little bit. You want it level. You don't want to have that, that, that access road sloping to the, the one side. But certainly nothing closed or, or nothing has begun for the grading that will be required for this parking lot. And, you know, we tried to do as best we can. The, the driveway connection itself is going to be filled for the most part. The parking lot is fairly well balanced. There's maybe four to six feet of cut in this corner and about four feet of fill here. So, you know, we're trying to work as best we can with the grades and, and basically cut a little bit and flip it to the other side and use it as fill.
So the picture that you have photo seven, that basically shows where the parking lot will be, is that correct?
Uh, let me try and. Got the, the green bar of death here. Let's see. Apologies for the, the lag here. It doesn't want to work. It doesn't want to work. Let's see.
Is that Siri?
Is this the, the plan you're talking about, John?
Giving us, uh, football updates.
It's actually this picture here.
Oh, from the inspection report? Yeah, so.
You missed that.
I don't know if I have that handy, but, um. Sorry, with all this, what was the question again?
So that, that picture shows where the park, the proposed parking lot down slope is going to go, right?
Roughly, yeah. Yeah.
And so they did a little flattening there or, or they did not?
No, not really. If you look at the topography, it does, um.
It has a little bench there.
There is, yeah, you could see it, it is steep as you first come off the upper parking lot, but then it, it, there's a gradual slope. It does flatten a little bit before it drops again into the woods.
Okay. Is, is the concern that maybe the work that was done out there is kind of?
Well, when you look at the existing drawing, I want to make, you know, how far off it was from the, that, that actual condition, so that we're really understanding what, what the impacts are of all this fill.
Understood.
Maybe there's less that's happening.
And, and you can see from the, the photo, the width of that access road is probably about fourteen feet. And there's very little in the way of regrading or disturbance on either side. You know, if they were reworking that hillside, you would have seen obviously much more disturbance, a wider swath of, of disturbance and, and soil.
All right, anything from the board?
No.
I think you guys start working out the details.
Sure. Are you mature to request a public hearing for next month?
I think you can, but it's, you have to realize there could be some important details, albeit small and probably easy to solve, that may, we may need to work on as we continue through the public hearing and beyond.
Right with that? And you're gonna have to, you know, I guess, work.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's the question of, of the visual, which may be an opportunity to not only make sure that this is screened properly, but that the existing par- parking lot is screened more effectively than it may be now, because it's two varying uses.
Sure.
I think that's an opportunity to be taken, so, uh, things like that. And just making sure some of these details with, with what's shown on the existing, what's been permitted already, just making sure that our documents are accurate.
Sure. And we, we'll certainly obviously work with you.
Yeah.
To get all that straightened out. And I think having the public hearing would only help us understand if there are any other concerns from the neighbor, for instance, and we could incorporate that into whatever we do.
Yeah, and I'm sure, cause everybody was noticed, there was one that came out. That's probably your, you know.
But I, I think we have a good handle on what, what we need to do.
Yeah, Robin, I'll set it up. Right, Robin?
What?
Oh, we'll set up a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, Joe.
I'm gonna try and.
Thank you.
Shut this off. All right, let me step out of the way and I will.
No rush.
Start my sharing. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Nancy, do we need a timeout? We're gonna be all right? Okay, how are you? Next we have the par three golf course. This is a discussion of the site plan. Location seven nine five, Route six. How are you?
Good evening, town board members.
Thank you very much.
So I guess for today, the purpose of tonight's meeting, I'll go over the mitigation plan that we have.
Okay.
All right. I'm enclosed, you guys will have a narrative of what I'll be going through. And, um, we're gonna go through the mitigation plan. The mitigation plan, we had a few, uh, members of the board come over and visit the property. And we've agreed upon the south side of the property, where the fringe of the golf course is going into the brook along the south side of the border going down. It ranges from anywheres from about ten to twenty-five feet. We will be removing all the invasive species that are in there. Some of the invasive species there, the Japanese barberry, the bittersweet, and then wing yu- not, yuwan- yuwanimus. Other ones that we do see, we will also be taking out. We'll be taking them out by hand. There'll be no pesticides or chemicals used. So that's about the, that's the south side. The north side on the Route six, let's see if they have it. On the Route six side, we will be planting some, uh, let's see, what are we gonna be planting? We'll be planting some, here we go, perfect. Along Route six, the border, we'll be putting some eastern white pines, um, some hollies for the low lion and some hemlocks. Those will be bordering, who have safety for Route six, so it'll enhance the look of the golf course. And, um, that's pretty much what we're gonna be doing on the mitigation on the north side. I think the big mitigation plan is going to be the brook. There's a brook that runs down the center of the golf course. When we took the property over, there was nothing but weeds growing. As you can see right now, there's no shade, anything along that brook, and the brook is just allergy. Not good for the ecosystem. So we will be planting, um, let's see, mine eyes are really bad, here we go. Along the brook, and you guys have the, um, map that we have, will be some red oaks. The sweet bay magnolia might change to just a regular magnolia that was up there. Sycamores, river birches, and lilacs. Those plantings will be on, if you look on page, on your fourth page, um, that's the vegetation that will be in the terrace zone. Below that, which is the bank zone, um, we'll be, we'll be planting the winter berry, the milkweed, the sunflowers, and the mountain mint. Those are, those are all native. And then, um, as we get into the splash zone, um, common. common, common reeds, sage and cocktails, which a lot of cocktails are already there.
And Sean, this is in addition to the tree?
That's in addition to the trees. The brook, to be honest with you, I think the brook is gonna be the more important thing of anything on that piece of property. As it stands right now, there's no shade for the water, so it's all allergy evaporating. It's just really, that's gonna be where we're probably gonna put most of our work into. The north side with the Route six, that obviously is gonna be tied in as a priority. Over the mitigation, it'll be probably a two or three year program that will be working to remove all the invasive species. But the brook right now, as you see the plan, that's gonna be a priority for us. It's just for everything on that piece of property, that brook has to be taken care of.
And the tree planting that you had proposed before and also what you talked about tonight on the north side will be done in one fell swoop, or will that be?
That'll be, that'll be in the beginning. That'll be one full swoop in the beginning because that's obviously safety.
Between the, between the fairways and other areas, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, that's correct. And on the north side, we were talking about, we're on the property, there's a gap. Those gaps will be full, filled with the white, with the eastern white pines or the hemlocks.
Got it.
Any other questions or?
Is the, is the brook flowing now? Because I know it was, it was dry when I went there.
The, the brook has a little bit of water in it. It's stagnant though right now. And I believe that had to do with something with Hill Boulevard because that water has been flowing the last three years. And for some, and whatever reason, it stopped flowing. I think that's, that should be coming back soon. And again, there's no vegetation, no plantings along it, so it's just allergy infested. We're, we're pulling cocktails out hand, by hand in spots just to get the water going.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a few questions. The cross section that you've submitted, I don't see it up on the screen for the audience's benefit, of these stream bank is not drawn to any particular scale, am I right?
I, I can't hear you.
Page four?
Page four?
Yeah, the last.
There is a profile of a stream bank that you've attached to your plan.
Oh, right here?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know if it's possible to show the audience that. Okay, we'll get to that. So is this drawn, is this particularly referencing your site or is this just a schematic general diagram?
This is a schematic general diagram of what's gonna, the brook is pretty much the same. This is gonna run right throughout the brook. We only, the only issues we may have is back where the pond is.
Okay, so this has no relationship to the actual distance from the center line of the stream to the various zones that are depicted, am I right?
That is correct.
Do you know what those distances are?
Well, it varies. I mean, the, the brook, the brook comes in this wide and then goes out as far, as far as you and I. It varies. It's just not one stream. Is that making sense in my answer to your question?
Well, there is, there is one stream channel that.
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. So whether it's a braided stream or not, each channel has a defined width that you're gonna be working with.
Yes.
So my question is, do any of your plans show the actual layout and distances from the centers of the streams for the various plantings you're gonna make? In other words, how far into the, how far away from the stream are you guys working?
Would page three help you out?
Do your plans show that information?
The answer is?
No.
The answer is no, yeah.
No.
Pardon?
Answer is no.
No.
There's no, there's no.
I think we need, I think we need that information.
I, I, I get, I totally understand what you're, what you're asking for. Again, that's gonna be one of those things when we go out and plant, we're gonna have to look at where the sun comes in every day. There's a lot more to this than just going out and planting plants.
But you have a flat, open area that you're working with, right?
It's a totally flat, open area, correct.
So is it, is it something you can or cannot do then to show the actual layout of how the stream is gonna be planted?
So you want me to come back to the board with how many feet apart each one of these plants are gonna be? Is that what it?
No, that, that, you may need to do that anyway. In a normal landscaping plan, we actually see at some point the specific plants that are going in on the streams. What's, the basis of my line of questions to you is the protection and enhancement of the stream and its banks. To protect the stream from erosion, from chemical pollution, pesticides, fertilizers and things like that. To restore that stream to something that's meaningful. Now, when I looked at the layout of the golf course, I saw many planted, you know, fairways, greens, I don't know the details of what you're calling, but they seemed to butt up right against portions of the stream. So I don't know how much room you have or proposing to put these various levels of plantings. If you're gonna have two feet on either side, I'd like to know that. If you're gonna have more on either side, I think we should know that also. Because one of the references that came to us from the tree commission indicated, actually it was the Westchester County government study, 50 feet on either side of a stream is what you really need to restore a bank. I don't know if that fits in with your fairways and greens because those plans have never been adjusted to show any of that information.
Right. I don't know if this answers your question, but if you look at where the plantings are, they're like river birches, they're red oaks. Obviously, they can't, there's a certain degree that they have to be back away from the river or they just will never grow.
Right, but for our purposes in assessing the impacts of what you're doing, we, we need that information, okay?
Yeah, but, but the burden, I think it's too much of a burden on them. Right now, that stream is not a stream, it's a trickle. They don't know how the water course is gonna be to make your banks out, so, I mean, you're, 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 you're looking at something in the future that's not there now.
Correct.
So, so how, how can you do some, I mean, honestly, how we can do it?
Well, every plan we do is always looking into the future and it's figuring out what's gonna happen when they're done.
But, but to my thought, the water is not there now. It may never come back. You've got a little bit of a trickle. You don't know what's going on there. And how could you say that this is a stream?
Sean, could you, could you establish, could you establish dimensioned zones for each of these from generally the, the center of the stream and the edge of the stream? Then you would have your bank zone in which you will be planting the things that you delineated.
Right.
And then you would have the other zone with, with, with an actual depth in which you would be planting the river birches and the other trees. Can you establish that?
Yeah, we can establish that.
Would that?
And we're, we're gonna have to go out and measure. Again, it's like if you take a river birch, it doesn't say river, it means you planted in a river. If this is a stream here, you're gonna have to see what the terrain is because it's not all the same, whether it can be planted here or does it have to come back eight, nine feet? That's gonna be a variable on pretty much each planting. But it's, what we're trying to do is we're trying to work with the brook because right now the brook is, it's not even good for the ecosystem. There's no shade, there's nothing. It's allergy. It's just not good.
Is that where you're headed, Aaron? Somewhat with a, you know, a number of feet from the, from the actual water's edge, which you would have the bank zone?
I'm looking for that information, but I'm not looking for that information in a vacuum. I'm looking for that information to assess the impacts of this project on the stream and how to restore that stream. And if you have to move a green or a fairway over in order to do that, you may need to consider that too. That's, that's something that may need to be done. This area has been identified as a New York State wetlands on their mapping system. Whether that's a valid thing or not for us to consider, I'm not sure. When you answered your EIF, you said, yes, this is also a wetlands area. We've got it, and it's a big, it feeds in a lot of area here. It may not be functioning the way it did, but it did function at one point. I mean, you can go back and look at the historical photographs of this area and you'll see what was going on over there.
When it was the golf course?
Pardon?
When it was the golf course?
Even before that.
Even before that. And before that, it was swamp.
What's the source of water for that stream? The, this water comes, it drains north from the wetlands that, well, wetlands, I think it's called. And another piece of it, another piece of it comes over from the Osceola runoff. And then it all goes onto the roads and keeps going.
What's flowing, what's flowing from there comes from the northwest corner of the property? So it's really coming from the conic drainage area?
I don't, and it also goes in, there's wetland.
Well, it comes down and it goes through the course and then it dumps into the channel that drains Osceola and, and the Hill Boulevard area. So they're flowing kind of against each other, believe it or not.
The height of the stream will vary throughout the season, throughout the year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, without a doubt.
It also will.
I mean, there'll be times if it rains enough, the whole thing will be underwater.
Right.
It's happened.
That's telling.
I think he's probably still around here somewhere.
Downstairs.
Downstairs? Yeah.
Little state.
Yeah.
I can't. I can't show this to you.
Look, there he is. He's back. Hey, Dan? We could use your expertise.
Yeah, I'll pick that.
So the, the channel that they're looking to vegetate on the golf course, all right.
That's the one that's central in the golf course.
Yes. So that's shown as a state wetland. I think at this point, we all understand that this was a golf course at some point. It was let go back to whatever it ended up in. And there was a lot of cleanup done in there. So what Aaron is looking to get at is we've got kind of a cross section. It's just a, you know, typical cross section, not, no detail to the project itself. I think what Aaron's looking to do is possibly get, now the county's got a 50-foot setback, you said, from this?
Well, I know it's gonna vary, but that's what they, you know, they recommend, the maximum protection.
Well, there's a big, there's a big piece of confusion here.
Just let me finish the thought just so that.
All right.
I'm trying to do like a.
Okay, you're just setting me all up here for the punchline?
Right. So, well, you left. So we have a typical cross section, right? This could go to my house, anywhere, right? So Aaron's got some information from what we've learned about this 50-foot setback where.
Well, it's not a setback, it's.
It's a determined area where there should be some vegetation to protect the stream.
Right.
And I think that's what he's struggling with. So we have some details of what they want to plant, you know, and it's kind of a, a plan that kind of lightly shows where everything's gonna go. And I, yeah, that's the cross section. I know between, between some of the work that I think John Tegger has done to help, and I think yourself, is there a way that we can get a little bit more specificity in this or detail so that Aaron is satisfied with the?
The, 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 the most important thing just for everybody to realize is this used to be the brook, but it's not anymore. The brook was relocated. So Aaron, I don't know if you're speaking to the county stream channel? Because there's, the county has a, in some parts of the county, they regulate certain water courses. So that's, Shrub Oak Brook is a regulated stream channel, but not here. Because at some point, what appears to have happened is they've moved the stream.
Cut off?
They moved, well, they didn't cut it, yeah, they, I mean, this is kind of like a leftover from where the Shrub Oak Brook used to be.
Or do we abandon it altogether?
Well, I guess somebody, I would, I would think some prior owner before wetlands permits and such were a thing, realized that they could utilize the property better by just pushing the stream over.
This here, Aaron, you see that dark line? That's, that's the relocated Shrub Oak Channel. This now comes in this way and flows into it.
So it's very different than it was years ago?
Yeah, we were trying to, I mean, the, one of the principles was making the contention that the work on the bridge was making the water disappear.
Right.
You know, we were out there several times where there's a bypass to push the water through. I mean, the water was flowing through, so the only way I could see water getting through there is maybe in a large storm event. Some of it may get shunted into this. But we also saw that coming from the, the north side of Route six, looks like some of the drainage finds its way into that channel. So it's not clear exactly how the hydrology works out there. It does get water, but it's clearly not the main channel. But to Aaron's point, I mean, it has been part of, like what the DEC did is it used to be the wetlands were just kind of swampy areas and then they started connecting stream corridors and, and the state wetlands designations expanded quite a bit as a result of that. So, I mean, I assume the, the state has flagged this wetlands at some point? Has that been a delineation done?
That's a question you have to ask the project manager, Frank DePerry.
Okay.
So let me ask you questions. A few questions, please. That road in front of that area, the park and ride?
Yeah.
That was the old Route six, right?
Correct, yes.
So the work that was done on the new Route six, which was done, I'm not sure when.
Sixties.
Late sixties.
Really changed the area a lot. So areas that would have been on the side, like where I live, are now wetlands. Because what used to be able to drain is now trapped. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, a good example of in your neighborhood, if you go in the, behind the library, you'll see where the brook used to be.
Right.
But it's, it was when they did the recent Route six relocation, they pushed it north and now it's kind of a straight line. It runs parallel to the, to the road.
So this has changed quite a bit over the years, not just because the old golf course was let to re-vegetate, but the water courses in the area have changed too.
Right. And, and obviously the most dramatic was moving the main channel. Because clearly if you go to, to the south of the golf course, you'll, you'll see the Shrub Oak Brook, or at least where the water is conveyed, coming out of Lake Osceola goes to that other channel on the, on the, on the south side.
But I have a question. Why are we, why, or why does the advocate want to plant the, the banks with, with the trees and stuff? Why can't he just put some small shrubs? It's not, it's not, uh, uh, it's not what I would consider something that needed to be protected from erosion because there's no flow there. That's, that's my, that's my contention.
Not to interject, it's not so much the erosion with the trees, it's the shade. The shade's gotta keep the water cool for the ecosystem to continue to grow.
Just let me ask you a question. So you want to put trees there for the benefit, actually, for the benefit of the golf course? And not, and not for the benefit of the, the banks?
No, for the benefit of the banks.
So, so why do you have to put trees?
It's the mitigation.
The, the, the reason we need to do that is we need to get shade. You're not gonna get shade off a, a five-foot shrub. We gotta get something up there 10, 15 feet. That's why we picked river birches.
What do you want to shade? I, I don't understand.
The water, the water itself that flows. If you don't keep that water cool, there's gonna be algae and all sorts of stuff that grows and it's, it's one of those things that we're doing anyway.
Beyond me, I still don't think why you have to plant the banks out.
Well, we, listen, if.
That's the end of it.
I have no problem with putting shrubs.
I mean, that's my thought.
Well, they have tree mitigation also.
I, I think that's part of the mitigation, but, so Dan, a, a pond becomes a swamp, swamp becomes ground at some point as it gets filtered, filled in, silted up. So it sounds like that's a little bit what's happened here over time.
There's still water in the thing, you know, so.
It's a functioning drainage ditch.
But it's, it's, it's also by our definition would be a wetlands.
So by putting.
Got the hydrology, it's got the vegetation, it probably has the soil.
Yeah, I think we saw some of it mowed up when we were out there.
Yeah, we did.
So by putting this in, this kind of standard detail, that's gonna protect the stream back there or whatever we want to call it, the drainage area, the wetland. So.
So that's sufficient?
Well, this is what I think we're gonna be looking to John and Dan, kind of the, to fill in the blanks for us. Because, I mean, you guys do what you do. These guys are, you know, obviously design professionals. So I think, I, I think we have this on for the next agenda again, if I'm not mistaken?
We'll probably put it on for the next agenda.
All right, and I think there was a few more details that we're gonna get worked on?
Well, we're gonna take what Sean and his team have submitted. We're gonna take the tree plan, mitigation plan that they've talked about before. We're gonna try to put it into kind of a unified narrative a little bit. So everything's there and with whatever numbers. I'll try to work with Sean to get some dimensions in terms of zones and so forth. I doubt they're gonna have to be able to give up 50 feet of the, of some of their fairways and stuff, but we'll see what they can do. And then, then it'll come back for your further, further look.
I'd, I'd like to get, you know, some information on that, the things you were talking about, to put in the record. No problem. To reduce the, you know, the. To reduce the, uh, and now, you know, the mitigation we have to do, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, a lot of what we're talking about here, cause, you know, the, the, this is, would appear to be a sort of, sort of, uh, stream channel mitigation thing that would happen inside a channel that really gets a lot of flow. Now, whether we get a big storm, whether water finds its way, you know, and a ten-year storm starts to, to cut through here? But, um, I really don't know the answer to that. But I'll, I can, I can look into the FEMA maps and things like that to, to assist in this.
Between our planner, architect, and our engineer, I think we'll, by, it sounds like by the next meeting, some of these details can get worked out, and we can be in a better place to be able to answer those questions.
Uh, uh, yeah, I hope we'll have a clearer picture.
Okay.
More cohesive picture.
Okay.
Alright, does that work for the board?
Yeah.
And it, it appears that there is in the write-up, there is discussion as to why and what is gonna be done on the banks for the protection of the, of the stream itself, when, when it's there.
There was more mitigation put into the stream so we could protect the stream, that was, that was my, my part of my thing.
Okay.
Um, than, than anything else, it was more protecting of that. It, I mean, if he wants to put shrubs in, we'd be happy to work with the board.
What I, what I'll say is, we'll, we'll lean on the town professionals, kind of work the plan that works. Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah. Thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next four projects, they're all solar. We have the Kitchwan Farm, Solar Farm. This is a discussion for the solar project. How are you?
Hello.
Good, thank you.
Alright, uh, so you all know me, but for the record, Julia Magliozzo, Director of Operations at ECOG. I don't think I'll take the time to rehash what, uh, the board already knows about the project. I'll just sort of recap what we've submitted as new materials ahead of this meeting. So we provided, um, some sample photos of, uh, an array that we installed in Pennsylvania. I know the board had asked for those last time, so we provided some, uh, photos to show those. And we also provided some, uh, additional details about the system, particularly in spec sheets. So I did want to make one note, I'm happy to leave this, uh, as a copy with the board when I'm finished. We provided a spec sheet for, uh, some Bovier modules that unfortunately, we will be unable to use due to supply constraints. So we've identified a different module from a manufacturer called Longi. They're still bifacial modules of a similar size. They do still have anti-reflective coatings, which I know were, uh, brought up as a concern last time. Uh, so I'm happy to leave this, uh, copy of a spec sheet with you all, if you would like to keep that. Uh, we also provided spec sheets for the inverters and racking. Provided some more details about the access road on site. It will be gravel or item four, um, just similar material. We did not provide a spec sheet for that, that is still being designed. Did wanna confirm, I believe this was raised last time, uh, that there will be minimal or no grading on site. Uh, there's really no significant slopes on site, so we won't have to do anything there. Um, as well as you can see in the photos that we submitted of the example system, um, with the fixed tilt racking that we're using, we can actually follow slight grades, so we don't need to be, uh, grading any land. Um, and finally, we did submit a drawing showing the wildlife-friendly fencing, um, which includes a space underneath for small mammals mostly to pass underneath, to be able to get through that area. So I believe that covers all the new materials. I would ask if the board is comfortable, we would, uh, appreciate being scheduled for a public hearing in September. But I'm happy to answer any questions before you have to make that decision.
Any questions from the board at this time?
No.
Couple of terms.
Yep. Any issue with the public hearing?
No issue with the public hearing, the thing that we are still interested in, and, uh, have always been interested in, is of course, being certain that it's screened properly.
Right.
So we would like to probably have another one or two conversations with Julia in that regard. And then, uh, question, are you planting in and around the panel arrays? Anything besides the ground cover that is there now, are you, what are you doing with that?
Uh, yes, so in the actual array area, we will be re-seeding with pollinator-friendly, uh, seed mix. Around the array, we did submit a landscaping plan for the areas around it, um, particularly along the driveway, that was at the property owner's request, so that, uh, they would have screening within the property itself. But between the rows of arrays, it will be mostly grass and meadow, uh, with a seed mix.
With the seed mix, okay. And can you describe, I don't know if you know, can you describe what that process is? Do you have to, are you just overseeding what is there, or are you removing what's there? Scratching it up and loosening the soil, and then re-seeding, both between the arrays and underneath? How, how does that work?
Uh, I believe we will just be, uh, re-seeding the areas that are disturbed, um, so not between the arrays. I would have to check with our team if we plan to, uh, like you said, sort of rough up those areas in between. I don't think that is part of the plan. I'd be happy to check on that detail, get you an answer.
I'd, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Alright, any other questions? So we'll get you set up for that public hearing.
Perfect.
I just wanted to bother-
Appreciate it.
Alright, and make sure we get the details to John.
Yep, not a problem.
Alright?
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I may just stay here.
Yes. Hey, guys, I'm sorry, if you wanna talk, if you could, thank you. Uh, next we have the Arcadia Farm, Solar Farm. Again, another discussion, locations thirteen hundred Baptist Church Road.
Alright, thank you. Yes, so, uh, similar thing, um, thanks, Mike. So, just to provide an update on the materials that we provided, um, similar comments. So, again, apologies for the sort of last-minute change, I will leave this with you. Uh, the modules have changed for this project as well, for similar reasons. It mostly has to do with supply constraints, uh, so I will leave this additional, uh, spec sheet with you all for the Longi module, so that you have those for reference. None of the other details have changed, we provided specifications for the inverters as well as the racking for the site. Uh, did want to make note of one other item that we provided for the Arcadia site, um, we did submit a stormwater analysis, which basically, in essence, states that the, uh, addition of the solar modules will not, uh, create a significant increase in stormwater runoff. At the moment, we have not proposed any post-construction mitigation. I am actually awaiting comments from Dan Ciarcia about whether he would see any mitigation as necessary. I don't know if he's still here.
He disappeared again.
He disappeared. But if, if he does say that those are necessary, we would be happy to work with him to address any mitigation that's needed, but we have not proposed any at the moment. Uh, so I'm awaiting his feedback on that. Uh, and I believe that is all I have to add about the Arcadia Farm project at this time.
Alright, and when you say, uh, constraints on material, is it you're not able to get?
Correct. Uh, so unfortunately, the actual factory that, uh, produces those modules has been shut down due to coronavirus outbreaks in the region, uh, for a couple of months now, and they have been unable to tell us when they will reopen. Uh, so unfortunately, we had to move to a different manufacturer. Uh, it's Vietnam.
Vietnam. Alright, any questions from the board?
No.
John?
Not at this time.
Nothing from me. And Dan was here, but he ran out again.
Sure.
You might wanna catch him.
Alright. Uh, and if I could ask, uh, for a public hearing to be scheduled here as well, if there's time in the meeting?
How many we got on the next?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Three?
John, I got a question, can we combine the two public hearings, because these are such similar-
No.
Catch them on-
No, they have to be separate.
No, they have to be separate, but they'll be one after the other, so.
Yeah.
Oh, alright, totally safe.
How, how many would that be, four?
No.
Would be five?
Five?
Five, that would be six total that you've scheduled.
Oh, with the, with the public informational too. Right?
Last week too. Yeah, I'm including some stuff from last week.
Well, you guys, thanks, Amelia. Let's set it up, I mean, we're gonna-
I'm going with some bagels.
Just put less work session items on.
What's that?
There'll be less work session items.
Okay. Everybody ready with that?
I'm sorry? We are.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, there he is.
Feedback.
I'll catch him on my way out.
Okay. Next we have the Old Hill Farm, Solar Farm. Again, another discussion of the solar project, locations five, seven, one, East Main Street, Jefferson Valley. How are you?
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Drop the right around the club here, huh?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Probably overlooking, though.
I remember all the barns on this property.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Honig, and, uh, my family owns the property at five seventy-one East Main Street, between Hill Boulevard and Lee Road, uh, also known as Old Hill Farm, or just plain Old Hill Farm. I'm here tonight in support of our application for a special use permit to take what was once a dairy and vegetable farm, and convert it into a twenty-first century community solar farm. As, uh, my family's owned this property for about a hundred and eighty years. And some of you may know of my grandfather Ted Hill, his picture's on the back wall. Uh, he was a town supervisor, helped found the Mohegan Volunteer Fire Department, and was a state assemblyman for this area for about twenty-eight years. But really, he was a dairy farmer, he and his brother ran that farm after his parents did. And they grew, grazed cattle, grew vegetables, until, he did that pretty much until he died in nineteen eighty-seven. And since then, it's basically abandoned farmland, and parts that we didn't continue to mow have some invasive, some brush, and a few invasive trees. So, um, as some of you may know, I've been before the town before with different ideas about how to develop this land for the last twenty years. Uh, the property's currently zoned half-acre residential, and, um, unlike some of those other proposals, this community solar project would keep the property in the family's ownership, it would be leased. Uh, would involve no new buildings, no traffic, no additional schoolchildren, no wetlands impact, and also, very importantly, environmental and economic benefits for the community and the residents living around there. And you'll hear more about that in a few minutes from the people we're working with. And we've put together a team, well-respected, very experienced people, I think you're familiar with Enter Solar, now known as Power Flex, they've done a number of projects in the town, and many, many projects in Westchester County. They're now known as Power Flex and a division of EDF Renewables, which is a very large, um, service provider and expert in renewable energy, and they've been doing it for about thirty years. So we're pretty excited about working with them and hopefully turning this into, as I said, a, a twenty-first century farm. And we've been working with John Tegater and the planning department to make sure that we do what we need to do to conform to the new, uh, solar ordinance in the town, and especially with respect to trees, native plantings, landscaping, and the site views for the people who are gonna live near this and drive by it. So I'm very happy to be here tonight to talk about this project, believe it or not. When I first started thinking about what to do with this land with my mother, in two thousand and nine, I wanted to do a solar farm, but at the time, it was cost prohibitive. So here we are, all these years later, doing it again. And, um, I don't know if you all knew that my grandfather was the vice chair of the New York Power Authority, so it's kind of especially pleasing to think that we've come full circle, and we're gonna be turning this farm into a source of cleaner, cheaper renewable energy for the town of Yorktown and the people who live here. So, um, I'm very excited to introduce you to Power Flex, in particular Hannah Stephens, and she's gonna sort of walk you through the project. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have Eric from, um, Bergman, he's our civil partner that we're working with. Um, and I'm Hannah Stephens from Power Flex, again, formerly Enter Solar, happy to be back in front of you all. We've been in front of the board for the IBM Watson Center project. Um, and then we've also done a rooftop for BJ's Wholesale Club in Yorktown, so I'm very happy to be here. And we have our site plan here, and then we also have some renderings that we can show, um, over the next few minutes. So, as Catherine just mentioned, we're here tonight to discuss our plans for her family's property at five seventy-one East Main Street. Uh, we think that this project is a fantastic use of the property, which, as she mentioned, was formerly a dairy and corn and tomato farm. Um, and since then, sections of that property have become overgrown with some invasive species and secondary growth, all of which we plan on detailing out in our tree studies, that's gonna, which is gonna be part of our, uh, uh, tree mitigation plan. Um, and it's also well obscured from the roads, so you can see on that first page, a rendering, um, from the view from that, from East Main Street. The main visual that you'll probably see is going to be our entrance, which we plan on having two gates, um, and we're using existing curb cuts. So we're not adding any additional curb cuts, there's two already on site, we're gonna be using one of those for our entrance. And to maintain sort of the aesthetics of this, of the farm and of the surrounding community, we plan on putting a sort of barn-style gate at the front, so that's what you'll see when you drive by. And then behind that, that's gonna be the safety gate, that that's with green slotting, um, with green slats in the, within the fence, so that minimizes the visual as well into the property. So, if you go to the next page, um, page three, those are some of the key considerations and benefits for this project that I'd just like to call out quickly. Predominantly, there's very strong environmental sustainability projects. As you know, the clean energy produced from solar improves grid resiliency and reduces greenhouse gas emissions. And we anticipate that our proposed system will offset about four million four hundred thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide in the first year, um, and is equivalent to removing one thousand one hundred and forty cars from the road and, uh, to the sequestration of carbon from roughly sixty-four hundred acres of trees. Um, which, all of that is detailed in the next page, um, and we strongly believe that these benefits outweigh the current site conditions of the property. Um, next, local development of solar energy projects like this one allow Yorktown to continue to align itself with New York's broader goals of seventy percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. Um, and to this end, New York State has incentivized this through community solar, uh, by creating mechanisms to encourage this type of project. And the best, the, the best thing about community solar is it's gonna allow members of the Yorktown community to participate in our project. And if they choose to participate, they would be subscribers, and that would allow them to save, uh, receive cash savings directly on their monthly Conadis and bills. Part of these incentives for, for solar in New York are rebates provided by NYSERDA, um, and the project can receive allocation, um, when it receives interconnection approval, which we already have from Conadis and. Um, and in the instance of ground or canopy projects, the negative secret declaration with the Department of Environmental Conservation. These considered, uh, these incentives are first come, first served, and we would like to ask if the board would please consider reviewing the secret process and granting your declaration ahead of your final decision on the project, um, which would allow us for stronger project economics and ultimately, the benefits for the community. So, uh, let us know if that is at all possible, we would very much appreciate it. Eric from Bergman can kind of get into the deep, uh, can answer questions here, but our proposed system will have no negative impact on the town's wastewater system. Traffic patterns, uh, will require no additional curb cuts, um, and again, no negative sightlines into the property. We have the renderings in the deck, and we have them blown up as well here, you can see, um, and no added light or noise pollution. Oh, thank you, Eric. So, yeah, so this was the gate I was mentioning earlier, so you'll see here the barn-style gate from the road, and then behind that is the, uh, safety fence with the green slats.
What's the material?
I, we'll have to get that to-
Wood or some type of wood-looking, okay.
Yeah. I don't know if we have a specific one spec'd yet, but we can provide that detail. So, yep, our plan is to continue to work with you all, uh, to make this project the strongest that it can be for Yorktown. And our plan is to provide further studies detailing our tree mitigation plan, landscaping, visual plan, stormwater design, and a detailed decommissioning plan. And again, if you have any additional questions, we have Eric here, uh, from Bergman to help answer. Um, and the next few slides kind of just go over a little bit more detail for the environmental considerations, um, our tree mitigation plan, and some property screening. I do wanna spend a minute on the mitigation plan, uh, which will include that tree study that I mentioned earlier. And hopefully, that'll show us which trees we need to maybe replant or relocate, uh, due to the project. Um, we are also planning on using the pollinator-friendly, uh, seed mixes within the array as part of our landscaping plan for the project, so we'll have more detail when we provide that. The next page for property screening, we plan on taking advantage of the trees that already align the property along East Main. already align the property along East Main, and will provide additional plantings as needed to eliminate any visual into the property. You'll see there's the stone wall in this rendering, that exists already on the property, and our plan is to repair and restore parts of that wall that have sort of cumbled off or obscured by brush. And last, we are maintaining the curb cuts, so this one is, you'll see here, this exists as it currently stands, there's about a chain link fence that connects the two walls, so we're going to, part of the restoration of the wall will be to create this entrance with the fencing, but again, that exists already with the curb cut there on the property. And lastly, for community solar with this project specifically, we're expecting that the benefits will support roughly 890 residents in the area should they choose to participate. And that's, that's really all I had. There's some renderings on the next page, and we're really looking forward to hearing your feedback, and thank you for the time, and look forward to continuing to work with you on the project.
Thank you. Well, I remember the last iteration of the property and what they wanted to do there. And I know a few different members on the board, but we were really concerned about the impact, especially the traffic, and, you know, the amount of development that was going on the property. This is clearly very different. I mean, it's again another farm that's staying in a, to a, belonging to a family that's been in town way over 100 years. Again, I think we have to see the details with the tree, obviously, we all know, we've heard the environmental impacts, and the pluses to this. It seems like every meeting we're getting the same lesson, so I think we're very, all very aware of that.
Just a question, is the house going to stay?
Excuse me?
Is the house going to stay?
No, so we will be removing the house, demolishing the house.
So, I think a lot of it's going to be screening, I mean, on one end you have the power lines, right, and you've got Club Fit, I think it's more across the street where you have that very nice detail there, I think you're going to have to start working out the details with the trees and the environmental impacts we might have to really look at again.
Yes, well, if you hope to get a neg deck earlier than later, you're going to have to work out the stormwater issues, any mitigation issues, which is mostly surrounding tree issues, and also the visual issues, so. And I think you have the schemes in place, but we just have to make sure they're fine tuned and that the board can make a determination that you've tackled all of those and there's no impacts to the community in those regards.
Yeah, we really need to see what's going on in there, I mean, this is a property we really haven't been to, and we never did a sidewalk when the first application came in.
I don't think we did.
No, no, because I think it came once or twice, and then, you know, kind of the development, when I was with John Myers, if I remember correctly.
We didn't do a sidewalk one day, wanted to put the condom, condom in the house.
The town board, the town board did not act on the rezoning application, so it never got back to the plan.
Yeah. Okay, but that was clearly much more of an impact than this is going to be.
Solar was not as economical as it is today, and to reiterate what Hannah said, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Tom.
To reiterate what Hannah said, the importance of getting the negative declaration sooner rather than later is very important to the economic viability of the project. So, we're going to work as hard as we can to get you everything you need so that you can do that comfortably, we're not going to ask you to do something you don't feel comfortable about. So, but that is, you know, as, getting in line for a, you know, first come, first served NYSERDA incentive for the project is very important. So, we'll work as fast as we can to get that to you, and so I want to, the other thing I was going to ask John, who's been extremely, John and his team have been really helpful, is what's the, the next step for us is to request a public information hearing, is that correct?
Are we ready for that?
I don't know if we have all, we need tree information, and would it help, again, this is one where I think about the consultants we've got now, is this, and again, I've never been in on the property, so I don't know what is actually coming out, and I don't think there's enough detail here, is this one that would, that would help assist, or is this, do you think not as impactful as the last one?
I think it'd be helpful, do we have the overheads so you could see what the property looks like today, because it's hard to tell when you're looking at that big thing.
Yeah, well, it's mostly regenerating fields and farmland, so in terms of trees, it's not a forested area.
It's not like lockwood.
Right, and so it doesn't have, it's not a protected woodland under the definition, because there's not an area where you have the three instances, so it's really regrowing, they're staying completely out of the wetland, wetland buffer, so there's no impacts to that, so, I mean, there's always good to get the information.
So, this is, if you look at, this is what the property looks like sitting here today.
Okay.
So, and to your point, you know, I'll just show you, so here's Club Fit, and you've got the power lines, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is Club Fit, the power lines are here, and so these were the fields all along here and the little triangular one, and then here, here's the house, the main house, the old house is kind of about to fall down. So, that, if you can see, most of this grew up because we stopped mowing here, we always mowed these. So, they're really, the tree issues are along the borders, which we're not planning on touching, and then if you know the very end of the property, there's a huge steep slope onto New Route, you know, I call it New Route Six, that's how old I am, New Route Six, and that's all tree, and we're not touching any of that. So, it's a little more tricky to walk back in these fields, I made them do it, but you don't have to do it, and these are mowed and easily walked. But I think the, I think John had it right, most of this is invasive Norway maples and, you know, invasive shrubs, and the real tree issues are around the borders of the property.
Which you're not touching.
Not the borders, no, there may be some big trees in, like here and around here, but the majority of the old growth will be left intact.
Well, a lot of our concerns with these solar projects are, because most of them that are coming in are very large, on your end of the world, we're worried about the environmental impacts, you know, from removing everything, you know, we've had some very substantial ones coming, and then the visual impact, you know, I don't think the wires, the overheads are really going to be troubled by the solar or Club Fit, but, you know, on the opposite side, as you drive, you know, obviously, and on Route Six, we're going to want to see it screened the best we can.
Well, that's the main drawing, the main renderings that you saw earlier. The goal is to make it not look like, to make it look like it's in keeping with what's around it.
Yeah, we couldn't agree more with you.
Restore the stone wall, additional plantings behind to screen the actual panels, there'll be a fence and then the panels, so we'll screen the fence, then there'll be the panels, and then also to have, you know, not some big industrial gate there, but something that looks more rural.
This is going to stay your property, so.
That's correct.
I'm very certain that you're going to want it to stay in.
Yeah, my mother still goes to Shrub Oak Methodist Church, though, I don't think she wants to hear about it.
You don't want to get her mad.
I don't think so.
So, I, the devil's in the details, so I think we got to get a lot of that to John as you start to work that out.
Do we need that before a public information hearing?
If you're moving on the track to get the, I mean, it's better to have it ASAP, so I don't think the public, the critical path is getting that without thinking about the public information hearing, put it that way.
Yeah, if you're really geared towards getting that end of it, against details, where I think that's probably easier, you know, on the.
The PIH is geared toward just getting the fact that there's a project out there and the general idea of what it is to the public, so.
Oh, I mean, any other comments from the board?
I got, Sean, one question.
They've been looking at trying to save the house.
John, just one quick question for you. If, if a farmer or if the Honigs wanted to return this to a farm, plant tomatoes or potatoes or whatever else, would they have to do tree mitigation to remove the hack and the tree growth that's there?
If it was like in an ag district?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is if somebody came along and said, hey, this is great planting land, we want to return it to what it was, so we're going to have to cut down some trees, pull some stumps, and, you know, take care of the hack and the overgrowth and everything else.
Well, if it was in the ag district, I don't think so, but I don't think that it is, so therefore, I would think that they would need to get a special use permit as a farm, because it hasn't been used as a farm, which would bring you into a process such as this, which would rise to having to look at trees and tree mitigation, even though you're doing farming.
Yeah, it just seems like a, an immense burden. I mean, I'm pro-tree, but, but, you know, again, it just seems like a, an overwhelming burden.
If you're in an ag district, I don't think, if, correct me Jim, there's no zoning, I mean, it just doesn't apply, I think the only thing is floodplain and, and, you know, any work in the weather.
But if they were planning on farming again, I would think that they would benefit from getting into the ag district, and therefore, after that fact, you wouldn't have the regulation in the same manner.
Yeah. Our tree law doesn't have that distinction you're talking about.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't recognize this type of situation where it's just, once it's a tree, it's a tree in our law, isn't it? That's, that's an issue. Because it would almost seem like this type of project should have some sort of, like, like an ag district type of thing, because you're reusing the land, it's just you're not harvesting every year, you're just putting things on it that are.
And a lot of Yorktown was farms, right?
Yeah, I don't know, it just seems like it becomes such a burden.
I just got a question. Well, it's.
I'm chair of the Westchester County Ag District, and, uh, the Ag District.
You gotta go ahead. If you could come, I'm sorry, Tom's going to yell at us. That's the great odds back there.
I know, I've already yelled that once already. I'm chair of the Westchester County Ag District, and what gets a district into the ag district in Westchester County is a number of criterion. The first important thing is the soil maps, and that, that's one criteria. If you are under seven acres, you have to have revenue of $50,000 a year, if you're over seven acres, it's $10,000 a year revenue, not income, just revenue, not net. And ag and markets, New York State Ag and Markets is very, very concerned about agriculture moving into housing and development, so they came up with ag districts to help protect farmers be able to maintain their land as farms. Once a farm is in the ag district, it can change ownership, it still remains in the ag district, you know, you're in till you're out, basically. But woodlands can be part of an ag district there if they are helpful to your farm, like if you have a, like I have a 30 acre farm and probably three or four acres of woodlands on it, but the whole piece is considered in the district. That is a separate assessment from ag assessment for taxes, that's a totally different thing. So, that's not what I'm referring to. But every county has their own criteria, but state ag and markets, it's, it's, they keep telling us in Westchester that we're too strict, and we need to let more, more land in the district, so it's mostly soils.
Is there any discussion about solar farms being sort of a special use within an ag district?
No, say like on my farm, if my farm gets its permit, the rest of my farm that I'm still using for the horse farm will remain in the ag district, and that just portion will kind of carve out. So, I won't receive the protections of, as I would if I was from my horse farms in the ag district. But the protections are limited because you still have to comply with all of the town ordinances and stuff like that, just get some, they just want speedier processes for you if you're a farm, basically, is how they help, and they help with neighbors. So, any other ag district questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you for, for sharing. Appreciate it. Now, it's from the board at this box?
No.
I knew your grandfather and your grandmother, great people.
Thank you.
So, one of your family members worked with the Power Authority?
My grandfather, the one who was this town supervisor.
So, now, I heard, I don't know if it's helpful, that's why we have the power lines there, that he was.
I don't know that, I'm not responsible for that.
He said to me.
I was a little child then.
He said to me, why do you think those, if you looked the map, why it goes, and then it comes here and it goes on my property?
I can't speak to that. The farm was a lot bigger then.
Robert Moses School.
I can tell you, he was such a great guy.
Oh, well, thank you very much.
He's also, also planning board chair, too.
Real irony. So.
Very busy man.
Yes, he was, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully we'll get to you very quickly.
He'll work with John.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much, you've been really great.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
You got one more? We have one more.
One more solar farm?
Another solar farm. Next, we have the Strawberry Road Solar Project. This is also a discussion of the solar project, 1645 Strawberry Road, how are you?
Doing well, gentlemen, how are you?
Good.
I'm Craig Dwyer, I'm director of utility markets for Green Street Power Partners, we are a developer and long-term owner-operator of solar projects throughout the state of New York and a lot of the Northeast. With me I have Quinn Cipatelli, the property owner, as well as Brian Matthews, who has been our project manager on this. And unlike the previous proposal, I do not have any family members that were historically in government, this is kind of Yorktown, but, you know, I think it is really exciting what you guys have done with, you know, the solar ordinance this past year, and we've been tracking it very closely. Also, unlike the previous solar project, we have obtained our utility interconnection approval for a 21 acre solar farm with Con Edison. We've secured everything we need for our NYSERDA rebate, and we have completed most of our engineering to this point, with the exception of SWIP, but we are meeting with conservation on the 18th coming up here shortly. So, I think what we do have in common with some of the projects that you've seen tonight, one of the biggest things we try to do with these community solar projects is, you know, we have to understand that we're in Westchester and there are residential abutters here. You know, I know you guys are seeing a huge wave of projects like this come through because you've just opened your solar ordinance, and one of the things we look at is interconnection viability to Con Ed's infrastructure. Just because someone has a farm doesn't necessarily mean that the power lines adjacent to that farm can host a project. And once a project is, you know, filed and installed on that location, it's, multiple projects usually can't exist on that same circuit. So, what we've done here is we've identified a location between Strawberry Road and Route Six with a few residential abutters to the northern side of the property in large part that we can create some nice vegetative screening with a landscaping plan. And we also, you know, have very dense foliage coming in here from Route Six to prevent any line of sight into the project, and are open to additional landscaping there as well. Access will be off Route Six, but we're also in an area with a lot of, we're also in an area with a lot of traffic. And this project here will, you know, we're going to be purchasing the property and owning the project long term, so we will not be creating any additional traffic for an area that probably doesn't need more traffic for the residents. So, we submitted for our special use permit application on July 22nd, and we're here tonight before the board to answer any questions that you may have and see what we can do.
Is this the old Knights property? Knights of Columbus property, okay.
It's made up of two parcels, actually, 16, 1645 Strawberry and RBC Industries, just east.
Been vacant a long time, that one.
Yeah.
So, this is all wooded at this point?
It is wooded, we, we did have an arborist come in and do a tree inventory so that we knew exactly what was coming down.
Okay.
So, there are about 600, a little over 600 trees that need to come down, that are over eight inches in diameter in DBH, but there are a number of invasive species on there, about 70 trees that are invasive species. And as you all know, you know, development is booming right now, the trees are going to be used for lumber.
That's what I was going to ask.
Right, so hopefully they will help to support, you know, a new home for a young family somewhere in the county. And we understand also the, we understand also what needs to be done with the tree fund, so we will be replanting on the northern side of the array. In the final landscaping plan, you know, is, you know, subject to further review with the planning board, but right now it's a proposed 80 trees. What's the species?
It's a Thalia green giant.
So, it's going to be 80 trees along the northern side. So, it's going to be eighty trees along the northern side to try to create as dense a buffer as we can for the residents up there, and on the northern side of the array where the residents are, we can actually, since there's no shading on the northern side of our array that we worry about, we can actually put about as dense tree coverage as necessary to make sure that we can try to be a good long-term neighbor.
You know, how, do you have a tree inventory of how many you are removing?
We do.
Six hundred and thirty-eight.
Yep, I believe we, we did submit the tree inventory in the plan here, so you can see them plotted, not only by species, so you'll see there, you know, fifty-three black locusts, a number of other invasives on there as well, Norway spruce, and then on the following page, we have them broken out by diameter at breast height. No problem.
Let me do that one more, kind of, with this.
I feel like you guys are pretty much experts in this by now, after seeing, you know, all of these different proposals, so we wanted to come prepared for you guys.
The United States is quite a, quite a book. He got it right.
A tree, I'm on the other side of the tree, but that's, you know, good use of the land.
I think this, this raises the same, you know, I mean, the big issue we're dealing with is sparsely forested areas like old farms versus this property and the Lockwood property, I think we have to come to grips with the impacts and figure out what we want to do in general on this stuff.
On, on the Lockwood property, we asked our environmental consultant to come in.
Yeah.
Do a look, I'm, I'm, this seems to.
Do the same thing, then.
I think so, because it's, it looks like a similar.
I think it's the same, same questions, right?
Yeah, the alternative, if it were subdivided and the homes were built, that'd be a hell of a bigger impact.
Yeah.
And the trees would be removed as well.
Well, the hill, like the prior, everything's cleared already.
Right.
You know, it's a different application, it's like some of the farms that came in.
Yeah, yeah.
This, you know, obviously, there's, there's, as they presented, there's, there's impacts in the area.
Yeah.
So, I, just to get ahead of it, you know, because they've already got all the other legwork done.
Right.
Just think that would possibly, if there's any concerns, we're going to know about it right away, rather than.
One note on the subdivision, one hundred percent correct, that, I don't want to say it's a bad one, but the property has been vacant for quite some time, it's, something has to happen there, we felt solar was the least footprint we could do, traffic, trees, as opposed to thirty-plus homes.
John, what's it, what's it done for?
Single family.
Right.
So, half acre, get what, thirty, thirty?
Maybe, yeah.
A little bit of wet, but if the last look was high twenty.
Big impact.
Well, that's, the trees would, in that situation, more of those trees would come down.
Sure.
More pavement would come in, more traffic would come in, pressure on schools.
Have to do stormwater, too, more stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was funny, the, the school board, Michael said, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they're looking for students now.
All right, so we're going to request.
They're manufactured a different way.
I don't think there's any real issues with the project as we see right now, but we are getting concerned, when we see an, an area like this, with that kind of development, environmentally, you know, we're, we're, are a little bit more heightened to the impacts, so what we've done with another prior application is the town's gone out and gotten consultants that will review this, obviously the applicant gets the bill, but we want to make sure you're all right with that, so I would ask John to look into that and work with you guys to get that moved forward, I think, because it's our consultant, it would bring, it would alleviate a lot of the issues. What's the matter, Walt?
Are you going to refer to the open space committee?
To the what?
Are you going to refer to the open space?
I think it's conferred to everybody.
Yeah.
Aaron says no. No, we'll get, we'll get it to everybody.
Of course.
Thanks, Walt. All right? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify, after the consultants take a look at the site, we'll coordinate that with John Taggeter.
We want to work very closely with.
Yeah.
With John, Robin and Nancy.
We'll help you out. Perfect.
Okay?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Look forward to getting back in front of you guys.
All right, thanks, guys.
Some people are, some people.
I'm sorry.
What else we got?
That's it.
When's our next, oh, now meeting?
Yeah.
No.
We want to be here all night. Yes, is there a second? Walt's a favorite.
Hi.
That's right.
Hey, Walt.
This wasn't so bad. It is easier. This is the land.